I'd like to call the meeting over.
Yeah.
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, Senator Byron and Bear Open Publics Meeting Act.
We'd like to hit no in silence, please.
Mr. Selayo, do you like to say the closing?
Sure. I'd like to say also one thing. Yesterday was a day of remembrance, and today is another day of remembrance where all of the United States got together and became united again. So let's try and think about some things that we would be. The pleasure to be here is to be the President of the United States of America and to be a representative for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let me do the roll.
Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Musa.
Here.
Commissioner Capazola.
Here.
Commissioner Selayo.
Here.
Commissioner Lodes.
Here.
Deputy Director Romero.
Here.
Director Albrecht.
Here.
All right, the meeting orders.
We are compliance with NJSA 40A:2-17, so the ordinance may be read by title only. Do I have a motion, second, that the ordinance can be read on final reading by title only? Do I motion?
I'll second.
What's vote?
All favor.
Ordinance 2023-3, amending Sections 3B and 3D of bond ordinance number 2021-3 of the County of Cumberland, New Jersey, finally adopted April 27, 2021, in order to decrease the appropriation and authorization amounts for the project described in Section 3B, to apply such amounts to the project described in Section 3D, and to amend the description of the project described in Section 3D. Do I have a motion and second to open public comment for ordinance on ordinance? All favor.
All favor. All right.
Public comment. On ordinance only.
Can I have a motion to open?
We already just did that.
All right. Do we have anybody in the public who'd like to step in and talk about the ordinance?
Good evening, I'm Nancy Richway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Township. I'm looking at this and it looks like the life expectancy is 10 years for what we're doing with this now. It's broad there.
If we follow the minimum period of usefulness in the New Jersey bond law, or if something may last longer than that, we have to follow some statute. I don't write the laws. So when we do a bond ordinance, when we adopt or introduce a bond ordinance, the useful lives in those don't necessarily reflect how long the asset or the improvements are actually going to last. It's based off of what the minimum period of usefulness on the bond life is in the New Jersey local bond law that we're allowed to use. So, for example, passenger vehicles, like you would think they would last you like 10 years, 5 years. The state doesn't recognize it as having a minimum period of 5 years. They say, yeah, it's probably going to last you 3. So that's why we don't do any bond ordinances for passenger vehicles as an example. So while this has 10 years and it may last longer than that, we have to use that because that's the period in the law we're going to use.
Okay.
Between what you know and I've asked many times on the different bonds that justify free, and I always get the same answer, this is what it is.
We've done it before. I understand that you asked a lot of questions.
I asked that question.
And this is one that you should have looked at a little bit more closely. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else who'd like to comment? Anyone online who'd like to make a comment? Just state your name and...
Okay, here. There is somebody talking though.
All right, since I can see them one here, go on. I have a motion to close public here on this resolution.
Second. Second.
All here, all here. All right, so that's good.
Do I have a motion, second, that ordinance 2023-3 be finally adopted?
So move.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Selayo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
The ordinance, the summary of terms of which are included herein, has been finally adopted by the County of Cumberland, in the County of Cumberland, State of New Jersey, on September 12, 2023, and the 20-day period of limitation within which assumed action or proceeding questioning validity of such ordinance can be commenced, as provided in the local bond law, has begun to run from the date of the first publication of this statement. Copies of the full ordinance are available at no cost and during regular business hours at the Clerk of the Board's office for members of the general public requesting.
I'd like to have a motion to open to public comment.
So resolutions over.
Resolution's over.
I'll make a motion, second. On favor?
All favor. Okay, is there any comment on the rest of the evening? Is there anyone coming over to say comment? If anybody online would like to make a comment, state your name. Seeing no one, hearing no one, I have a motion to close public here on...
So move.
All favor.
Resolution 2023-629, resolution authorizing application to and grant agreement with New Jersey Transit and U.S. Department of Transportation for grant funding under the Federal Transit Act, Section 5311, from January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024. Do I have a motion and second?
So move.
Second. Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Selayo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-630, resolution authorizing the payment of bills. Do I have a motion and second?
Second.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Musa.
Yes.
Commissioner Capazola.
Yes.
Commissioner Selayo.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes.
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero.
Yes.
Director Albrecht.
Yes.
All right, now we'll review the September 46 agenda. Again, we'll open for public comment. I have a motion to open public comment.
No, we're going to do the consent agenda. I'm going to do that.
Okay, we're going to do the consent.
The consent. Number 14426, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for conducting feasibility analysis and road infrastructure study for Nav Avenue extension. Number 14455, resolution awarding contract for providing pollution repair and vehicle painting services for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181-CCCCPS. Number 14453, resolution amending Resolution 2021-522 entitled Resolution Exercising Option to Renew Contract for Providing Roadside Tire Services for the County of Cumberland and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181 CCCCP, bid number 19-33, resubmission to extend an additional three months. Number 14493, resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for Call Works End Point Protection Per Protection Per workstation X8 System Support and On-Site Maintenance Per Quote AB61323-1A for the County 911 Office of Emergency Management in accordance with New Jersey State Contract 1NJCP-83925. Number 14496, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contracts for providing labor counsel and labor law-related services for the County of Cumberland, RFP 22-72, resubmission two. 14497, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing litigation services counsel for the County of Cumberland, excuse me, RFP number 22-73, resubmission two. Resolution 14516, resolution amending Resolution 2020-279, in order to accept a grant extension of one additional year for the FY 2020 Comprehensive Anti-Gang Programs for Youth. 14519, resolution amending Resolution 2023-353, in order to accept additional funding of $2,581 for the County Social Services Block Grant for Fiscal Year 2024, grant number 14520, resolution approving budget amendment Children's System of Care CSOC CIA/CC program, 14521, resolution approving budget amendment FY 21 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Resolution 14522, resolution approving budget amendment SFY 2023 Operation Helping Hand Grant Program, $105,263.15. 14536, 2024-2027 Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services Comprehensive Plan. 14544, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for providing testing services for the Cumberland County Engineers' Office and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181-CCCCPS, bid number 21-32. 14547, resolution authorizing approval to exercise renewal of a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department Human Services Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services for the Community Peer Recovery Center Grant Program, number 24-958-ADA-0. 14548, resolution approving budget amendment Community Peer Recovery Center, $109,470. 14550, resolution amending Resolution 2023-380, resolution authorizing the execution of a grant agreement and acceptance of funds for the FY 23 County Reentry Coordinators Program. 14553, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for Live Scan System Maintenance and Printing for the Prosecutor's Office in accordance with New Jersey State Contract Number 18TELE00671. 14554, resolution exercising first and final option to renew contract for proposal for innovation grant for providing sober living pass-through payments, transportation, coordination, and/or programs activities for family members affected by someone else's opiate use, RFP number 22-46. 14555, resolution exercising first and final option to renew contract for proposal for innovation grant for providing sober living pass-through payments, transportation, coordination, and/or programs activities for family members affected by someone else's opiate use, RFP number 22-46. 14556, resolution authorizing application to federal fiscal year 2022 and 2023, FTA, Section 5310, capital assistance grant funding for the office of aging and disabled. 14558, resolution amending Resolution 2023-616, entitled Resolution Rejecting All Bid Submissions and Authorizing the Readvertising for Requests for Bids for the Providing Urine and Oral Drug Screen Services and On-Site Testing Supplies for the Cumberland County Alcohol and Drug Abuse Services Office and the Cumberland County Department of Corrections, bid number 23-25. 14559, resolution authorizing purchase of two 2024 Freightliner 108SD dump trucks with Cummins Elk 9300 HP engine for the Department of Public Works under Sourcewell National Food Contract Number 0060920-NAF. Resolution number 1462, resolution approving budget amendment SY 22 State Criminal Alien Assistance Program, $27,705. 14566, resolution canceling expired contracts for September 2023 covering materials, services, and supplies. 14567, resolution authorizing purchases from state contract vendors. 14569, resolution authorizing grant agreement with the Corporation for National and Community Services for providing operational funds for the Cumberland County RSV2 program. 14570, resolution authorizing grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the FY 2024 County Aid Program Grant Funds. 14571, resolution approving budget amendment FY 2024 Annual Transportation Program, $7,770,768. 14574, resolution authorizing grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for reappropriated bridge bonds funds unextended under the Statewide Transportation and Local Bridge Bond Act of 1999. 14575, resolution approving budget amendment Statewide Transportation and Local Bridge Bond Act of 1999, reappropriated bridge bond funds, $47,270.53. 14576, resolution amending Resolution 2023-370, in order to accept additional funding of $3,537 for the SFY 24 Jail Medication Assisted Treatment Reentry Initiative. 14577, resolution approving budget amendment FY 24 Medication Assisted Treatment Initiative, 14579, resolution consenting to temporary closing of the following county roads, CR 548, CR 605, CR 550, CR 347, CR 3553, CR 555, CR 614, CR 627, CR 633, CR 649, CR 670, CR 676, CR 708, CR 718, and CR 677 on Saturday, November 4, 2023, and Sunday, November 5, 2023, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for the Tri-County Sportsman Motorcycle Clubs Incorporated Annual National Dual Sport Ride. 14580, resolution approving five-year plan for the Office of Cumberland County Sergeant for Use of the Document Trust Fund Monies. 14581, resolution authorizing change in custodian of the petty cash fund Cumberland County Rutgers Cooperative Extension. 14582, resolution authorizing change in custodian petty cash fund Cumberland County Corrections Prisoner Wage. 14583, resolution authorizing change in custodian petty cash fund Cumberland County Corrections miscellaneous. 14584, resolution authorizing renewal of the indemnity agreement with the Bridgeton Public Charter School for the use of the Cumberland County Library as an evacuation site. 14587, resolution authorizing interdepartmental agreement between the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office and the Cumberland County Sheriff's Office for automatic license plate readers. 14590, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter Brown-Clark et al., Charles Warren, U.S. District Court, Docket Number 1:20-CV-7907, in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC 5:30-5.5. 14591, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in the litigation matter Brown-Clark et al. versus Charles Warren, U.S. District Court, Docket Number 1:20-CV-7907, in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC 5:30-5.5. 14592, resolution authorizing increase of monetary ceiling for legal expenses in accordance with NJAC 5:30-5.3 through NJAC:530-5.5 for legal services for the litigation matter of Crystal Brown versus Cumberland County et al., Docket Number CUN-L-438-21. 14593, resolution authorizing assignment of the matter of complaint made by an employee of the Prosecutor's Office. 14594, resolution authorizing assignment for investigation of the matter of complaint made by an employee of the workforce development. 14595, resolution authorizing and ratifying letters supporting the efforts of Morris River Township and Commercial Township in mitigating flood issues. 14596, resolution declaring October 23 as National Cybersecurity Awareness Month.
The law group had addressed the trucks that might be purchased, the yellow, just trucks being purchased, the majority of the trucks. Are they, what's the life expectancy of those and what do we replace it?
So the life expectancy on each trucks is 15 years. We try to replenish them. I currently have 13 trucks that are beyond 15 years. So I'm replacing two this year, I'm going to ask for three next year, and three...
Is that because we were behind?
We're behind. We're behind on plow trucks and our brush hog tractors.
There's trucks that have more than 15 years, what do we do if they don't pile with these units?
I use them for spares right now. Anything I have right now, I'll put out to the Hopewell yard and take as many parts off them as I can to put on the new trucks, newer trucks when we need to fix them. And then once we take all the parts off that we can, we'll just scrap them or put them up for auction.
While you're here, I have a question about Resolution 14574 about the transportation funds. Just to clarify, the first thing that comes into your head is, would any of that that would care, the bridges would have applied to Culver? And just, could you just clarify that? Does it...
Are we using any of those funds for...? No, we already have the funds set aside for that.
Set aside for that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. As Commissioner Pearson called that out, we just received the last hurdle, it's a garden for engineers, and just, we're close.
The last thing that we received was that the Army Corps of Engineers is waiting for something from the state historical society in regard to the trolley track rails that are there. They just need a statement from them, and we were talking with Mr. Whittaker for a couple of days, and I think we sent out an email this morning that showed how that's being achieved as quickly as possible. And in the meantime, we were talking with Mayor Bridgestone, and he said that he knows someone on the historical society that is still really going to try to push it along. But once they get that approval, then the Army Corps of Engineers says that they will go ahead and issue the permits, and then we can go right out to have, well, they're designing the Culver now, and it probably will not take them the 90 days that they have once all the permits are received. And then once they're, they'll give us the RFPs best, then we can put out the RFPs.
So we're very close to, and what's that? If they just need to just get it done?
It's nice to get it all done officially. People are talking, they're saying, oh, that's not installed. You know, we don't think that's right, but finally getting it officially, that'd be good.
And we try to let everybody know, and you can send me the alcohol every time something comes in.
And that's very much appreciated, because we get a lot of questions. That's why I asked Neil about this. People need this documented, and they actually have questions about after we're gone out of this meeting. So thank you for clarifying.
And as to the bridge and Bridgestone, the entrance to the Bridgestone Park and October, we do it.
Yeah.
And that's...
I am so tired of war around here.
Don't try to wrong anybody, but talk to the utilities authority, they need to hook up their pipes, that's one of the...
Okay, that's great.
So two major projects, one we finished up, which is the bridge to the park, and also the other one we're getting started is Culver, which when we first came in, we did the bypass and pushed the permits, and had a lot of help from state officials, even federal, a congressman that made that happen, and it's actually sputted, sputted high. So we're really, because originally it was four to five years, maybe seven years, so we've done it in less than a year, we're able to get going, and actually start doing the construction.
And that's the good thing too, because oftentimes you get big promises from people to get things done, and finally things aren't getting done. So that's very good.
So, and... I want to pull off five and six, and I'll discuss that a little bit later.
1449.
Yeah, 14496, we're not pulling off. We're discussing right here. 1447. Five and six.
I just have a question on 14579 with the road closings, just to make sure that we got the townships know and the first responders, the local students, in case there's a fall out, and they'll be aware of it. And they appreciate it when the road closes, or they're fine.
Yeah, we do that always, Neil.
I know, we usually do that, Neil. Notify when a road is closed, you notify the township, and you also notify the...
Oh yeah, so we notify township, my local, all the local responders.
They usually say that right. Yes, thank you.
Just add to that, remember, this was kind of a misconception, this is a bluff of the song, as an effect they regularly have, we were talking about the riders that ride with the helmet, ride on the street, and this would be a place that they'd be at, so we're kind of proposing that you go ride, you know, do that.
Just as always, nice of you.
Yeah. I've got a lot of riders on the street.
We should do that for when we close, for the parks, so that they would go around that, literally.
It's pretty easy. You guys?
I'm good. And just on that topic too, like I know that we're redoing the website, it's nice that I downloaded the violent app, and you get like little notifications, so through that, our new website, we have, we should have a way to, you know, put that out automatically so people...
so people have notifications on the phone, so it's something we can look at.
Lou, do you want to?
Yeah, that's a good question, is there an update on the new website?
Lou, you want to give an update on the website since I roll talk with the?
We're going to give a presentation, so.
That is something that could be, that is going to be worked out, notification from the website straight to cell phones.
We're ready, we're already in migration.
Yeah.
So, do you want to, we asked Lou to do a, as far as, to do an update on where we are on the website, do we want to do that now, or wait until we get the process?
Yeah.
Because everyone should know what's going on, so.
I mean, it should be ready by the fall, we, the contracted vendor's working on it, we're in the last few phases of it now, and we'll be going live in a short period of time, we're working out, we're just, it's in queue.
Before we go live, maybe we can have a presentation where we can present it to, on here, that would be nice, for everybody to see that.
Do you want to do an update?
Get a hand, or come up early.
I'll have the packet with me that I presented to you guys, it's back there for the.
You want to, you want to, this guy's basically developed a packet to tell us what, what's been happening with, just public information in general.
Well, what I listed was the actual quay, what you guys will have a copy of is the quay, and exactly where we're at on the timeline, when we're started, and where we're at right now, and at every phase, and that is provided for you back at the other session, and that's what I have for you.
Why don't we finish up?
Yeah, absolutely. And when we're ready for the public, absolutely, then, we'll be able to see it. Mm-hmm.
All right, so let's do that, just give us an update.
Right. Right, and then the website will be ADA compliant, and it will be compatible to cell phones, webs, everything current, we'll be able, we'll be able to do.
All right, we're going to, we'll go in both sessions, this guy's basically going to give us an update on the website.
Yeah, you'll have the portal, the actual portal information.
And other things she's been doing, not just without the website, but what we've had, and then, for the general public, when we're ready to actually roll, she will make a presentation that actually present the website to you, we'll be stopped, so.
So we want to do that at the next meeting?
No, we're going to.
Yes, I agree.
We're going to be in Melville for the next meeting, so we do it the work session and not the next work session?
It's supposed to be finished before fall, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
So. So what, what we, what was ready now, I mean, this is the first time we're talking about, is you'll see the design of it, it's not live, so what you could see, what could be presented right now, is what the design would look like.
Great, well, I agree, do it the work session, and then we have the ones there, so everybody can see it, share, just to see, it's not going to be live, but at least they'll have a knowledge of it before.
Yeah, you'll be able to see what it'll look like, yeah.
Do you want to give it an update today to us, or that website, whether the general orders?
We can do that, the portal, actual printout of the actual portal, but step-by-step process, from the beginning to where we're at right now, is provided for you while there's a packet back there waiting for you, and that's what we were going to go over today.
Yeah, and that, and, and then for the work session, we can do probably.
Sure, and just look at that design, from the interior page, the external, and then the art contest that we have, would be, what, the pictures that we would be rotating from those who submitted their pictures throughout the county.
And also, and we can discuss this in our executive session too, but I think it's important for the public to know, communications and transparency is very important to this board, and I know that Commissioner Capazoli brought up the app, and I think that that's great, but starting a regular commissioner communication that goes out, maybe some sort of a virtual newsletter that goes along with this, and that's something that's been presented and asked for, so hopefully we can work that into the new website design, and we can send out regular updates on what's happening as well.
Absolutely.
Have you incorporated it in the website?
Oh, we can, we have, we have the ability to input content, we'll have, we have the ability to do that now, but it'll be more current.
Too?
Yes.
Okay, good. Because I don't know if anyone's seen, if you have a chance, download, just to look at Vineland's app, it's a very interactive app, I get messages if they're, if they're not picking up your trash or something like that, you get messages, and it's just a way, it's a good way for us to be able to communicate with the public, and, you know, that's been brought up here tons and times, and people feel like that, they don't know what's going on, well, if you have an app on your phone, everybody pretty much has a cell phone now, it's just an easier way, I feel like, with an app.
You know, we do have a county app though, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, a current county app.
But then sending out messages and updates and road closures and stuff like that.
And also notification for people to download the county app, because I know most people do not know that, many people don't know how to find the list of events, I know our tourism website had updated as well recently too, and just communicating back to the public.
Yeah, we can discuss that.
We have much of a regular newspaper, of course, out there in Cumberland County, so being able to utilize our Facebook page, what I think would be really helpful.
And Vineland's light out, when we had like, you know, our little tent, people could have like a QR code, they just walk by and scan it, boom, they have access to the, you know, the site and the app.
Absolutely.
That's what Vineland has.
Our tourism website is amazing, and it has a full calendar of events, because there's nothing to do, there's tons of stuff to do here, it's beautiful, but no beat, no vibes.
Yep, right.
Quick question, does anybody know why the local newspapers, the papers that come here don't report?
Because there's no money, like, we're recruited, there's no money, nobody's buying ads.
Many reporters here anymore, it's lost, there was one last reporter, and he was.
Joe Smith, he's not.
Yeah, so there's no reporters.
And the only thing they're going to report on is anything that happens, if they're negative.
I mean, they do get, we do have a media list that we do submit, the press releases, now, whether they get put up or not, it's, it's a guessing game.
They're picked up by local media, and we help them utilize our county's Facebook page and whatever.
But there's a.
It's all in the works of us, that's what, yeah.
It is definitely up to us to tell our story, you know, with all the good that's happening.
Do you want to finish up with the, the, what's now, the general?
Do you want me to read them, or?
If you want to, if you want to talk, yeah, if you want to talk, we're going to do that, we're going to chat out, for the whole session, and then it's going to be a topic.
So you want me to read the ones that aren't on consent?
Yeah.
14442. Resolution awarding contract for providing renewable energy consulting services for the county of Cumberland, RFP 23-28. 14464. Resolution awarding a contract for providing out-of-school youth industry-focused occupational training and internship program services for selling county, RFP number 23-20. 14452. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing survey services for the Cumberland County Planning Board and Engineering Department, RFP number 23-29. 14512. Resolution exercising first option to renew the contract for providing comprehensive credible messenger, youth, and training, identification, notification, and mentoring program for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office, RFP 22-52, resubmission. 14509. Resolution approving change order number one, contract for providing translation services for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office, bid number 21-20, resubmission.
Is there any, I was talking here, is there any work with the prosecutor's office at all? Give us an idea of why the decrease? Do you have any answer? Yeah, 60% decrease, I probably don't know why, because it's labor, hard labor, that's a bit too expensive, so. Okay.
14545. Resolution exercising second and final option to renew contracts for providing translation services for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office, bid number 21-20, resubmission. 14518. Resolution awarding fair and open contract for providing employee benefit coverage services for medical prescription, dental, vision, and life coverage for the county of Cumberland, RFP number 23-33. 14552. Resolution awarding contract for providing and delivering various traffic signal equipment and sign materials to the Cumberland County Engineers' Office and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181-CC, CCPS. 14561. Resolution authorizing application to the New Jersey Department of Human Services Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services for renewal of the Cumberland County Comprehensive Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Grant for calendar year 2024. 14563. Resolution authorizing purchase from New Jersey State Contract Vendor for one, 2024 Ford Expedition Special Service Vehicle 4x4 for the Office of Emergency Management.
Anyone here for the emergency badge, good all? Overfitted?
14568. Resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing architecture services related to two roof replacement projects, 2020, or 2020, North Laurel Street, 800 East Comer Street, Bridgeton, New Jersey, pre-qualified for RFQ number 22-53, as needed general, A and E consulting services. 14572. Resolution approving change order number one to contract with the 2022 VRL Program, various municipalities, Cumberland County, bid number 22-37. 14573. Resolution approving change order number one to contract to increase fund for the amount of meals to be ordered for the nutrition program for the elderly of the County of Cumberland, Cumberland County Department of Aging. 14588. Resolution amending resolution adopted August 11, 1960, designating certain county roads as blue streets.
Is any more comments? I, I want to say, number seven, Resolution 04518, this, the county is looking towards the side, we're going to look into what major cost of insurance coverage, we're going to look what we can do, save, to do it better, we're going to look at different angles, we're going to change the mission, our, our insurance board, to give a little more expertise on there, to question things a little better, right down, our, myself, three officials serve on that board, and one often, we, we want to start looking at our insurance board with a keen eye, to kind of see what we can save, not, not, just question, and that's part of that, so it's actually a very big resolution for us to do that, if any benefits down the road, of course, it, it costs these, and better, maybe better services toward police also. All right, so do you want to give the chartering for? No, it's true today, sorry. Who's authorized the favor of salaries, which?
That's next, uh, public comment. Do I have a motion second to the public comment?
All favor? All right, anyone in the public who would stand up? No, I want to say your name.
Good evening, Celeste Riley County Clerk, and I'm just here to let the commissioners know, and the public know, that there is a special election in Lawrence Township on September 26th, it will cause those residents confusion, it is not the general election, it is a, an election that will be held by the school board, and so the polls, those, those voters who received, or signed up for a vote by mail ballot will receive their ballot, or have already received their ballot, sample ballots are mailed today, so voters who go to the polls will receive those within the next few days, but just in case you're out in the public, and someone in Lawrence or whatever contacts you, it is a special school election, it is not the general election, general election is still November 6th, all right, any questions?
Are they going to overlap the ballots, regular ballots, are they going to overlap them?
Yes, yes. So they will be very confused. The general election ballot though, is, the color is green on the outside, the special election is yellow, so they will receive an envelope that will be yellow on the outside, and we're moving forward to do the same thing with the sample ballots, so that there's no confusion with the sample ballots, we're starting to, this is the first time we've really had a special election that overlapped into the general election, so, and we're starting to receive phone calls from residents, so, just to making them aware that it was advertised in two newspapers, the Vineland Daily Journal and the South Jersey Times, but people don't receive the paper anymore, and so, it is really word of mouth, we did put it on our, the clerk's website, it is advertised on our Facebook page also, but it is really the school's responsibility, they just, we do the work, and we do build this back, by the way, to the school.
Do they, is this because they, is this a same election, they usually have it April or?
Yes, so schools are allowed to have special elections for bond questions, and so this is a bond question, which was on their November ballot of last year, so if you probably under, know what happened, it probably was voted down, so they're trying to do it this way, so.
Since you're, since you're there, I, we've had a lot of questions about, especially the fire districts with the cost, the rise of, is there, can you give us an explanation of why the cost?
So it's vote by mail, so, as, as you probably are aware, paper, the cost of paper has increased over the last year 15 to 25%, and our numbers for vote by mail voters has increased, so when I started as a clerk eight years ago, we had about 3,000 vote by mail voters, we now are hovering around 15 to 17,000, it increases every year because of the push that occurred in 2018, and as people, you know, realize that it's nice to get their ballot at home, they have time to think about who's on the ballot and research it, one of the things that is not included is information concerning the candidates, and if people do call our office, we do, we do give them the websites of the parties or the people who are running, but that's, that's the only information that we have concerning the candidates, that's not our responsibility.
So the main cost is pretty cost?
It's paper.
Paper.
Paper, the, yes, for vote by mail, yes, and then, the machines that we've, we've chosen produce a paper ballot, so it's not, they don't give you a receipt or anything like that, it's an actual physical ballot reproduction, and paper costs, so unfortunately, and I think it's going to go up next year, because next year's our presidential election, and we, we usually, currently, we hover around a 30, 27 to 35% turnout on off-year elections, which I would consider this an off-year election, even though we have all the state, you know, offices, right, senate and assembly, but people don't usually turn out for those as much as they do for presidential elections, next year, we will have a presidential, and we will have a federal senate and congress on the ballot, so we will have a very high turnout, plus the city of Vineland, so it will be a, a large turnout next year, it will be inexpensive, more expensive.
It's a question.
I'm looking at my finance people, I'm sorry, it's going to be more expensive next year.
It's a premium inside.
I know, no, me too, me too, but I'm really surprised how much more paper has gone up, it's 15 to 25% more.
Printing costs.
That's what I mean, with the printing, of the 15 to 20. Yes, yeah, it's really increased exponentially, and postage, you know, ballots have to be mailed first class postage, we're not bulk mailing them, so.
It's a question we get asked a lot by the fire districts and stuff, why the cost is so expensive?
Well, and the fire, we've been able to, under the pleasure of the commissioners, you've been able to carry the cost of the fire elections, there's only one district that can actually go to a November ballot, the rest are districted differently than the actual election districts, and that's budgets, which is, you know, hard for them to separate, so they have to have their fire district election in February, and that's when they do it, more people are becoming aware, and since, if you've signed up for a ballot for all future elections, you're getting a ballot for the fire district election, it's just the law. Any other questions?
Anything else? Anyone online who want to answer questions, clerk?
My staff works on Tuesday nights, and right now, we're currently working to get out the general election vote by mail ballots, so we're working, I have a great staff, so I just, I have to commend them, so, any questions, just give my office a call, and we also are on the internet, so, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Dean Hawk up at Deerfield. This resolution, 14516, had to do with the comprehensive anti-gang program, can somebody tell me what that is, and what does it cost, and why does it cost? What are we doing about it for it?
Prosecutor Stocky, if I could ask you anything, if you want to take a stab at it at all?
She, I believe, will be in attendance by policy next meeting, however, suffice to say that she does aggressively look for grants to bring money into the area.
It is grant-funded.
To combat new violence, gang violence.
What did he do, though? That's what I'm asking.
From my experience working in the school system here in the city of Bridgeton, and having credible messenger in the schools, they are additional resource in the schools. Teachers are stretched thin. I think the last time that I had a number from Bridgeton High School, they were about 35 staff members short in the high school alone, not the entire district, which is pretty tremendous impact in the school. So you have your administrators, your guidance counselors, and teachers who are stretched very thin. And these individuals, and they change all the time, so I can't, you know, not, I'm just simply giving you an observation of what I saw of the individuals that went to school at the time, are in there to be an extra resource to counsel students to kind of be aware, know people in the community, and realize who, you know, some of these kids are related to, and some of the things that they're involved with outside of the school, to prevent that gang violence from coming inside the school.
Are these professionals, or are they just citizens?
I can't see those, do their resumes or anything like that, all I can tell you is what I've heard.
Commissioner, we, our library generator is involved with this progress.
I'm actually part of the CCPYD. Thank you, CCPYD. I'm actually in the violence reduction work group, so we actually deal with this a lot. So we do do the credible messengers that go into the schools. We also help support activities that are happening in the communities, like they did some things over the summer where they were meeting at local grocery stores to get the kids and communities together, to help bring communities together. And in those, in those times, you saw that there was a dance contest, there was a DJ there, and you saw different people from different gangs that were actually working together and doing things together without any kind of violence. So we're trying to bring together different gangs that are in the community. We had a basketball tournament, same thing, they were playing, everybody was really worried about violence, there were police there, nothing happened. There were no fights, it was great, they played against each other, it was perfect, we were really happy about it. We do the credible messengers, we also provide support to those who are traumatized from school or different things that happened in, like, to their families, and we done down that road. There's also, oh, we just did a summer intern project where we took some people from alternative schools, they went through a training process so that they got jobs in local businesses for the summer, so that they weren't out trying to make money a different way, in a violent way. So we're using...
Or illegal way.
Right, illegal, thank you, illegal way, thank you. So those are different things that we do that are making quite an impact, even though it may not seem like it does.
And I'm also seeing them in parks, area parks around the county. So, you know, sometimes these kids might be hanging out in the parks totally unsupervised and alone, and getting in all sorts of trouble, or even being in danger of all kinds of things. And so now you sort of have this presence there, and it does kind of unify everybody and more organized and watchful.
And our credible messengers are messengers that are, that were once part of that gang life, that have been rehabilitated, and also work with different court systems. One of them, one of the members of the credible messengers actually is used, his name is used in federal courts for people to go to for guidance when they get out, so. It's all grant, yeah, it's all grant-funded, yeah, it's grant-funded.
Thank you.
It's definitely unfortunately necessary.
And Mr. Hawke, the results in Vinland have been good. When we, I mean, we were very leery in the beginning.
So the credible messenger?
Yeah, credible messengers, and we really questioned it in the beginning, would it work or not work? While looking at the numbers from last year, it helped out. And it's a lot of, a lot of less gang fights, I mean, and fights in school, and we were able to have a better year for the kids because of them.
Appreciate it. Do you have any more questions?
Yes. 14555. Somebody describe for me, please, the sober living pass-through payments transportation coordination program. You can? Okay.
Okay, so this, sober living pass-through payments, you want to know what that means?
I just, what is it?
Okay, so these funds are from the state, they get it from the feds, and they pass it down to us to provide innovative programs to try to assist people who have alcohol and substance use disorders. And the county of Cumberland has decided to use those funds to assist people who are engaging in early recovery from substance use or alcohol use disorder, and we pay their first month's rent to live in a sober living house. So sober, there's, and we also pay for Oxford House placements. So there's two different types of possibilities where we can help a person who's embarking on their journey to recovery to help them be stable, because part of recovery capital, just like when you have a business, the more capital you have, the better off you are. The more recovery capital a person has, a safe place to live, a job, a community, the less likely they are to reengage in drugs and alcohol. So we help them with stable housing, so that's what that does. So we, because we're county government, we cannot directly pay landlords, because it's just a lot of work, right? So we hire, well, we, through RFP, we contracted for an agency to apply to make those payments for us on our behalf. And then every, so they front the money, they pay the landlord, and then we pay them back, plus we pay them a fee for cutting the check for us.
Mr. Hawke, does that answer your question? Follow up with that?
Yeah, that is, thanks, appreciate it.
See, and also, Reverend, when we're looking at the homeless issue, all these components, drug addiction, mental health, all those factors others have, are components of homelessness, and we tackle one issue at a time, piece of it, maybe the homeless issue. We get it, we never stop with what you get solved for.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Same question. When they come out of prison, or come out of jail, you know, these programs are beneficial to get them all going right to start for a period of time, and hopefully they keep the funding, the population, employment, and so forth. And that's what most of us are saying.
Okay, I appreciate that.
By asking the questions that you do, I think people get a try and hear the various programs this county provide, not only through grant funding, but partnerships to provide services to the residents, often at no charge to them. So thank you for asking the question, because I think that answered a lot of questions.
I appreciate that. 14579. This is the one where we're closing the roads for this motorcycle race rally. I would guess every community has a problem with these kids riding around with no helmets on. And I'm not saying these kids would do that, but it would be a good time to have someone from the county to be, a booth, a tent, to just explain the problems that arise with these people that are riding around without helmets, not even licenses, I would guess, and I doubt license plates.
Yeah, that is, it's a huge issue, and that's what I was making point, these aren't those people.
These are regular bike clubs.
No, I understand. But it's a good time to at least get a point out there, because, let's face it, they, they talk to the other people. You know, it's all, it's all big community there. It's just a good time to have that type of thing, and I think, oh, you guys should do it. No, joking. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Motion to close the public hearing. All favor. Do we, we are a closed session?
We have a need for executive session, you do not anticipate actually taking that.
Do you have a motion?
Resolution 2023-631, resolution providing for a beginning salary to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Senator Byron Bear Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:412, matters involving individual privacy, matters relating to public safety and property, matters relating to litigation, negotiations, and midterm client privilege, matters relating to employment relationship. Do I have a motion in second? Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capizola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleh?
Yes.
Commissioner Loews?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Al.
Yes.
Then we're going to stay here? I said, we're going to stay here, we're going to go...
This has been a QBC television production in association with our partners and sponsors. QBC broadcasts on Comcast Cable Channel 22 and livestreams its programming on Facebook and YouTube. All rights reserved by Quinn Media and QBC, programming that serves the South Jersey market.